I'd like to call the meeting order for December 15th, 2021. We'll start with the pledge.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, before we go to the town administrator update, I'd like to introduce our new selectman, Mr. Tom McGurty. Thomas? Tom?
Tom.
Tom. Okay, McGurty was elected last night, so welcome.
Welcome.
Okay, I guess we're gonna spin down to town administrator update.
Which brings us to the first item, just a recap of the election results. There were 375 ballots cast. Margarita Borgal received 11 votes. Michael DeMers received 48 votes. Thomas McGurty received 208 votes. Christopher Whitman received 108 votes, totaling 375. Like with all elections, I'd like to take a minute and thank all of our ballot clerks and wardens, everybody that worked during the day, and the candidates. Everybody did a great job. Everything went smooth. And, you know, they went well. Thanks to them.
The results were pretty quick last night, weren't they?
Yeah, they did well counting. It was smooth, and all the numbers proved right off. And it's always good after 10, 12 hours, so I thought it was good. In the next item, if you recall, we've been waiting for the windows to be replaced. I did get a call from the company saying that they would be starting this coming Monday, December 20th. And they expected probably through the 23rd, but they're expecting to start on Monday.
Probably Ed was overseeing that, so one of us probably ought to be coming in and checking on him.
Yep. Yeah, absolutely. I can keep you posted on if they need anything and what's going on.
May I ask a question about that? How old are the windows? Because they look fairly new.
They're probably all different throughout the building.
I'm just looking in here. I'm just curious, how old are they?
I'd have to check. I mean, I know that Mr. Paul did some handyman work. And remember, he replaced the seals of all of them. I'd have to check.
Are they defective or something?
Well, I don't believe they're all getting changed anyways.
No, they're all getting changed. That's what you meant.
I think they're just doing their other ones.
Nope, the whole building is getting new windows.
This one looks like it's not closed all the way.
I know Elise was saying hers were pretty old. She had one that was newer, but the rest of them were pretty old. The seals are broken, so are the gases. But, yeah.
I didn't check the others. I just happened to be looking at these.
They won't stay open at all, remember, with the sticks that we...
Right.
I mean, I can tell them to do some...
No, 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 just, no, don't bother doing any work. I was just curious what you knew about them.
Yeah, right off, nothing.
Yeah.
It's more that your side that's the major issue.
And that one pops out. No, the one still...
Yep, falls out.
Yeah, we've walked into my office a few times, and that window's been in on the floor.
Okay. There you go.
Last week, we read aloud a letter from Drummond Woodson, and Attorney Rachel recommended inside the email for us to get a town legal opinion based on the culvert. I did, as you instructed, and reached out to Leslie Berlin and Will Lanley. I was able to confirm that Leslie will be here on December 29th to kind of give an update. Will probably hasn't seen that email yet, but whether permitting, I trust that he'll be here on the 29th to give us an update with that as well. Oh, he's gonna do it tonight?
Yeah, I watched the email last week.
Okay. Did you see the emails I sent you?
I don't know yet.
Okay, so maybe he's gonna give you an update tonight. Next, just an FYI that I got a call from State Representative Ted Krizak. He indicated that there was some excess in state revenues coming down. And he's looking to come before the board, probably the first week in January, to talk about what that means for the town of Acton and how they would be appropriated. Reminder that we have a meeting tomorrow with the town's attorney. It is an executive session pursuant to 405-6E with counsel regarding a pending litigation.
5:00 PM.
5:00 PM. So, the meeting will start in here at 5:00. We'll go into an executive session. The planning board meeting is gonna start at 6:00. I do expect, based on the information in front of us, that it will still be going on. Virginia will be prepared to come into the room when you're ready to adjourn and take any motions or matters that needs to happen at that point.
So, the planning board's gonna be over here?
Yes.
So, we're gonna have to adjourn it now then?
Correct. Yep.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. And she's got it all covered. Next was just kind of an FYI. I plan on printing off all the town policies. And we have a new selectman in place, alphabetical, and each week I'll put a couple on the agenda. We'll go through and review them, see if you have any changes that you want to discuss, and just make sure that we have a, you know, they're all up to date and you have new signatures on them. Some of them, you know, they've been reviewed, but there haven't been changes in several years. So, try to get in a yearly habit of getting new selectman signatures on them each calendar year. Last item that is gonna be an agenda item, then kind of sold not to make an agenda item, more of a discussion. I did get an email from the Warrant and Finance Chair asking if the board would have a conversation regarding reconsidering the filming of the meetings. I did, Mr. McGurty was in this morning. We had a conversation about a lot of different things. And he supported that going on the agenda. I spoke to David, and he thought this might be a better place. So, that's the request. Would you reconsider allowing them to film it?
Well, I believe that when we had made this decision, there was a three-board panel.
Yep.
We discussed it and gave our reason and why. And it was a three-to-nothing vote on it. Reconsidering it, I don't know why we change our decision now.
I think that...
Go ahead.
I was just gonna say, I mean, it is a decision that we did make. It is something that I do want to look into here in the future. I mean, we kind of talked a little bit. There are some changes that need to be changes or just some things with, anyhow, I'm not gonna get into it right now, but things that I would like to see, you know, over the next year or so, you know, with committees and different things, and trying to work together better, and anyhow.
I'm not sure what the protocol is. Given that the chair of the Finance Committee asked for us to reconsider that, would it be appropriate at this time for us to ask him to speak to that, to understand what his point of view is?
So, the selectmen certainly set the agenda, and, you know, even though the chairman asked me, I still have to get permission from the chairman to put it on the agenda, so...
I understand. I'm asking the question.
Yeah. I mean, David essentially is running the meeting.
Yeah. Come on on up, Dennis.
He's the long champion of the warrant finance committee. The reason I asked to reconsider it was I've had quite a few people ask me why it wasn't filmed, because normally people go on Channel 26 or YouTube or whatever and watch it. And I said it was a decision that the selectmen made. I feel myself that all these meetings should be filmed for the public to be able to see the minutes of the warrant finance committee reflect the actions taken at the meetings. So, there isn't the detail that some people might expect from minutes. But the warrant finance committee unanimously said this is how they wanted the minutes to do, because we would have both written minutes and video originally. That's why I asked.
Okay.
So, you usually use the filming for minutes, is what he's saying, right?
Well, yeah, and some committees, and we try not to have the planning board... There's certain committees we really don't want doing that for legal purposes. But the warrant finance, Mamie Minuswell has told us in the past that if we have a tape of it and we're certain the tape is in good working condition, then that can serve as the minutes. So, that's what he's indicating. They don't take minutes, they use the tape.
Use the tape. Okay.
You know, I just, I guess what the meeting, I guess you guys had that when you had your elections and all that, when everything came about. I guess what was frustrating is if you read the ordinance, it says that you're supposed to have a warrant in front of you. There's no reason to have a meeting unless you have a warrant in front of you. There's no budgets, no budgets have been passed in, whatever, and you have a two-hour meeting with absolutely no budget. I think that was my concern.
The explanation for that was we had invited members to share to the warrant finance committee. So, we also had to call the ordinance. We had to adopt our policies and procedures on how we operate. And there was a lot of questions by the new members, because they hadn't served on the warrant finance committee before. And basically, that's why the meeting lasted as long as it did.
Yeah, having been a member of the warrant finance committee, I was one of those new members, and I appreciated the opportunity to learn about the process, the calendar, learn as much about the budget as possible, so that when the warrants came forward, I was in the best position I could be to sort of deliberate on those and act on them. From my perspective, the warrant finance committee is a committee that was established at town meeting. The members are appointed by the town.
Elected. They're elected by the town.
Yeah, elected, excuse me. Elected at the town. And it seems to me it's a freestanding committee in that regard, and it's accountable to the residents of the town. And so, as I understand it, there's been a history where these meetings have been videotaped. I believe that's true. People have expressed an interest in seeing them, so I see no reason not to videotape them. And it's not a significant expense to do them. I, quite frankly, don't think, as a selectman, I should be involved in sort of deciding how often you should meet, when you should meet, what your agenda should be. This is a freestanding committee. It's for them to run, and they're accountable to the townspeople. And townspeople don't, for whatever reason, think that it's being run managed properly. I think they'll deal with that at the next election. So, I would like to reconsider this at this stage. And so, I'll stop there and maybe get any reaction.
I'm just thinking, you know, I just would like, you know, if we say, okay, let's do this. I mean, you are there to learn. I mean, that's, okay. I do understand you had new members. And I guess I'm gonna say it again. Committees, selectmen, you know, we need to respect each other. When you're on a committee, you're on that committee to do your job and, you know, teach people. And we're here to listen to people's problems and stuff. And I just don't want to be filming stuff that, you know, people are bashing people. I guess is what I'm, you know, in some sense. I don't have a problem with it. But I just, you know, we're here to work, all of us, and we all need to try to work together. I know it's hard, conflict with people's, you know, people and past and things like that. But we've got to figure out something, because things are not getting done lately.
And I agree. I agree with you when it comes to all the people elected and the same. But there's also one point that you're not looking at is there's an ordinance. And the ordinance states the finance committee is to work with a warrant, and they haven't had one. They haven't got one. So, the issue I had with that meeting was, and it's unfortunate, maybe it was a knee-jerk reaction, but if you read the ordinance and then you watch that meeting, okay? That meeting turned into, some of it, not all of it, but don't take it the wrong way here, but some of it turned into some grandstanding in a forum on some of their beliefs that had nothing to do with the actual budgets in hand, because there wasn't one. And that was the issue. So, I mean, we can reconsider it. You know, and I'm willing to do that. I just believe that, you know, in the future, you know, the people on these committees want to come and actually do something constructive. And a lot of that stuff wasn't constructive. It was a waste of time. It was grandstanding. And I felt that it was not fair to some of those people on that committee. Now, if we all know that now, that there's an ordinance, and this is what we're gonna roll by, then we can reconsider that.
I appreciate that, David, and I'm glad that if we can get to a point to reconsider it. I, just to put a finer point on it, I was not here when that committee was formed, so I'm not...
The committee's been here a long time.
Yeah, it's been here a long time. But from what I can gather is in many forms of government, there are checks and balances. And I view the warrant finance committee as a check on the budget process. And that was established as an independent body to do that. And so, I don't think they should be subject to a critique or review by the selectmen. I think if that's to occur, it should occur by the residents. And so, while I can appreciate some of the things that went on there and how you may have felt about them, I just don't think it's appropriate for us as selectmen to step in and try to direct how that committee should be functioning. It's a separate committee. It's accountable to the town. If there are issues, it'll be dealt with there.
Well, I understand that.
Yeah, okay. I just felt like I, because I think there was intentionally a separation, if you will, a separation, segregation intentionally put in place when that committee is formed. When I've looked at them in other towns, they seem to be established for that purpose. And so, I think that's very healthy to have that.
All right, so if the board so chooses, someone can make a motion under Old Business under the town administrator's update. It's not a place for any type of vote, if that's what you decide to do. So, on that note, that's all I have for tonight.
Should we have a motion to that effect?
Well, so when we get down to Old Business, if someone wants to make a motion to add it back in.
Yeah. Very good.
Okay.
That's all I have, yes.
That's all you got? Okay, so we're down to warrant bills. Everybody signed up?
Yep.
Okay, approval of the agenda. Do I have a motion?
Make a motion to approve the agenda.
Right here, a second.
Tom?
Oh, second.
Good, thank you.
All in favor? Okay.
I'll get with the program here, so.
Takes time.
Minutes of the last meeting.
I'll make a motion that we accept the minutes of the selectmen's meeting minutes, December 8th.
I think I'm gonna...
You're staying, because I...
Yeah, you're gonna stay.
So, I'm gonna suck at that.
All right.
All in favor? Okay, we are down to department head committee chair updates. Any department heads?
There we go.
Will Lanley, District 1. I watched the selectman meeting last week, so I can be... But so, there was a letter. The letter was from, like, Square Pond?
The letter was from Drummond Woodson. It was from the attorney that represented the Square Pond Association. And she essentially gave her opinion that, you know, in a roundabout way, she doesn't agree with Inland Fisheries' stance on the bridge or on the property.
All right, so I guess just an update, just going home. Probably the first or second week in a row, I did have a meeting. And we started the process on getting a new culvert updated. And hopefully, the end of this week, if there's a way for some subcontracting numbers to come back, I told them, spell it right out, you know, what we're looking for. Survey, if they want to survey, they'll order themselves and get exact, you know, survey what we don't, what we don't know, what Inland Fisheries does. So, he's in the middle of still trying to figure out some numbers. But he told me the end of this week, he's gonna have strong habits for us in some...
So, you hired an engineering firm that's already started?
Yeah.
What's the name of the company?
Ransom. It's the same company I used before. It's a different gentleman than before. So, we started on that. And the letter that we got from Inland Fisheries back in October, I did talk to the gentleman from Inland Fisheries that kind of deals with all this stuff, and I told him what we're looking to do. They, again, they have what they want to be put in there. And I told him, now, this is where we're going. And he told me, as long as we stick with the guidelines from the upcoming years of DEP, they'll consider it when time comes. So, at this point, I'm just waiting for them to get back to us. So, the design is gonna need like two or three different designs of what we could put in there. And I'm gonna go from there. And I'm gonna get them on road to maybe, and we'll get everybody from Square Pond. And Inland Fisheries, it needs to be here, and we'll talk to others and take the next step.
It's probably, oh, I'm sorry, real quick. It's probably a good idea when you decide to have that joint meeting, when you say you're involved, that we actually using, doing a butters list from the maps online and make sure that we, you know, do a mailing to that area to make sure everybody gets it.
Those are three designs you were talking about. What do you, what would that consist of? What's there now? A little bit bigger and a bigger one?
Was it, it's gonna be the same size. There's possibly another, not quite a culvert, maybe a cement culvert.
A box culvert.
Now...
Right, the aluminum, they were talking to us.
Actually, a box-type culvert. It's a smaller one. Instead of being three sides, it's got four sides on it. So, he was gonna give us two or three different options to play with and see what we could come up with. So, but it's gonna be the same exact measure that's there now. So, whatever boat can get through there now is going, it's gonna get through there. And the gentleman from Inland Fisheries, he understands where people are coming from, but at the same time, he wants to make it very clear that in this state water, you know, there's a, you know, anybody who uses that boat, or whoever's pressing that field on too. So, I'm here for both sides, you know, trying to take it all in, both sides, and go from there, so.
You know, it seems like we got a chicken-and-egg thing here. I understand why you want to start the design process, but I think it's unclear what can get approved there. And I think there has been some expression by engineers and maybe lawyers that if we replace it in kind, that that can get done. It can clear the approvals. Although, from the state now, Inland Fisheries, I think what I'm hearing is they're suggesting that they'll consider it. And before we, how much is the, I guess I'm concerned about spending design money until we know exactly, or better than we do anyways, what we can actually do there. Can we replace it in kind? And if so, is there anything the state can do to stop us in that process?
Yeah, they believe there is.
We've got that letter from...
And I apologize, and this is, I mean, Will and I didn't communicate today. I thought I'd see the emails. Well, no, I was gonna have it as an agenda item, and I would have had the folder. But, yeah, Inland Fisheries, they clearly think that, you know, that they own it and they have the rights. But we've got three different opinion letters.
But the lawyer doesn't...
Well, is it, yeah, I mean, is there anything gonna happen in the next? I mean, when's your next thing that's gonna happen with this? So that we can get him all caught up with the three or four letters and give Leslie a chance to present? I mean, are you doing something right now that's costing?
Well, I'm still waiting on like numbers from him. And just, these plans, I'm not going to figure on no design or anything, is all I see. He was gonna, you know, give us three or four different options.
So, what are we paying the engineering company? What is he charging us to do these designs that he's working on?
He said he was just gonna give us ideas.
Okay. So, we're not committing to anything?
The thing is, we really have to have something we can at least feed them some bait.
Okay, all right.
Will this work?
These are freebies.
Yeah, no, these are just ideas.
Okay.
Right, so, yeah, what we can do. Okay.
Well, that's why I was surprised when you said you hired the engineer.
I can't do that until they tell us.
Right, right, okay. And I think there's still a valid point in Drummond Woodson's last letter that the town may need to consider getting their own legal opinion based on what Inland Fisheries said. So, it's probably best if we put this on a particular agenda and give everybody a chance to get caught up and read.
You know, I kind of find it kind of silly that Inland Fisheries can come in and say that they're gonna approve it, but they have no financial stakes into it.
Well, that's what we're trying to figure out with these letters.
Leslie Berlin, Road Committee Chair. What we do is gonna depend on...
What's that?
The option that we choose is going to depend on how it can be done. Because if we have to move, put any fill or move anything in that water, and in Army Corps approval. And basically, what I think Ransom is doing is giving us a few sketch plans.
Yeah, because you can't go to the Army Corps unless you have some idea what you're gonna do.
Well, they mean, we can't go to the Army Corps with an in-kind replacement, because they won't approve it. That won't get through the permitting process. So, but there's supposedly ways that it can be done in kind without using any fill.
Right, if you don't disturb...
That's what I understood.
The only one who can tell us that is an engineer.
Okay, all right.
So, at this point, you know, my understanding with my discussions with Will is that we're gonna get the sketch plan, you know, the sketch plans, and then go from there.
So, it sounds like you're trying to clear the requirements of Army Corps first. Because they are the principal approvers, if you will, in this process.
If we have immunity at Army Corps, it's gonna mean a bigger culvert.
Yeah. So, if we can get it done without disturbing anything, they said that they would be fine with that. That's my understanding.
And Army, the engineers are really, I mean, we're not engineers. We don't know how it's gonna be. They say it can be done possibly, so there's some gray area that we need to find the engineers.
Okay.
That's our step. And, you know, going forward, the attorney, I think, at this point, is putting the cart before the horse, because we don't know what we're gonna end up with.
Yeah, yeah. Okay.
Yeah, that's why we're waiting on the attorney.
Yeah, that's why we did it last week. They wanted to talk to you guys and see kind of where it stood, so.
I mean, I don't even know what to recommend at this point, because we don't know what is possible.
Right.
When he gets those engineered, those sketches or whatever they are, then you're gonna present that to the Army Corps of Engineers, correct?
Well, present it to the board first, I would think.
Well, yeah, but that's what the purpose is, to take those sketches, to propose them to them, see if it's feasible.
You hoping to be able to keep them out of the whole process, aren't you? Yeah, if we can find something that, yeah. So, you don't have to...
Same kind.
Yeah.
The minute we start putting fill in or moving anything, then it triggers Army Corps permitting, and they will require us to do a larger culvert, which they have, I mean, Colin was here twice and told us the same thing both times, that they will require a stream crossing.
Okay.
Which should be a bigger culvert. Supposedly, there may be a way to do it without triggering them.
But even if we get, even if we get Army Corps, it sounds like Inland Fisheries is already indicating that they're expecting it to go through their approval process.
Right, and that's why Drummond Woodson stepped in on behalf of Square Pond, because she just, they disagree with their stance. So, we'll hold off on...
Yeah.
Usually municipalities...
We know what we're looking at.
Yeah.
We really, you know, wise for the money.
When I did the culvert up there on Wilson Lake, which is the same idea, it's a stream crossing, I met with DEP and everything, and, you know, DEP explained to me that municipalities ran under different statutes, and we were allowed to place what was in the roadway.
DEP's regulations are different from Army Corps.
Yeah, yeah. Well, they work together.
Well, they do work together, but their requirements are different.
Oh, I understand that, so.
Good luck, Dennis.
One other thing, the guardrail that got hit up there.
Yes.
I'm just gonna, I told them probably two weeks ago, and they saw it, they had to come out. I give a job there.
They're busy.
They told me they're swamped. They're gonna go, like, so I'm gonna call in the morning and see if I can hold the other company, and then come out. But I guess a question to you guys is that, they told me they wouldn't be able to come out. This was a month ago. It's still happy New Year, you know, weather permitting. But he did tell me the posts were good. You pulled on to the guardrail, and the posts are good. They'll sell us the piece of guardrail. He said they said they, other towns, you know, they, you know, put the guardrail themselves. You guys be fine with us doing that?
I don't believe, as long as the post, everything's fine. I can't see why you couldn't do that.
No, I told them to make sure that they're fine, and, you know, if they gotta be done, I'll have to have them do it. But we can just get the piece, we'll just put it on ourselves and move on from that, so.
Do you have any concerns about doing it yourself?
No, we took it out on the park before to get a view of it.
Shouldn't take long to do anyways, right? Even if the post, after you bend back up, you're gonna bring your excavator up, you all right?
So, if you decide...
Probably the best way.
Yeah, if you decide to go that route, want to make sure that our payroll for that project is completely separate, because it's still an insurance claim that we're working on. So, you know, labor, piece, everything is separate invoice, so that we can submit it to the insurance company.
And one more thing.
One more?
I know we're coming up on budgets and whatnot. I know we've touched on it. So, I guess a question to you guys, what's your plans in the parking lot? Do you want me to move forward on trying to fill in down there, there in the building down next year?
So, that was actually, I've got that next week as an agenda item. We've got a couple of lengthy executive sessions going on, so, but we figured once the new selectman came on, that was an agenda item for them to start figuring out if they were gonna do it this year. I mean, they're welcome to answer it now, but I did...
The gentleman, he's gonna come out, hopefully, next week. I just left him a message, should he come back, but, you know, with the holidays and whatnot. He was just gonna give me some rough numbers on doing the parking lot. So, he said they can do it, you know, whoever, just that next year, they can do it, no problem. We're just gonna be ready to do it, so.
So, I mean, at this point, this board hasn't had a conversation about what they're gonna do with the building or anything. Can we get back to you next week on that?
Yeah, so there's money in there anyway.
Yeah.
So, would we wanna use that money to get a building now?
Well, before we talk about tearing the... Well, before we talk about tearing the building, we've got to make sure that this is, this is something we wanna do. We wanna hear the public.
Yeah, no, no.
Yeah, I know, but it's still, we, we haven't decided yet exactly what we're doing with it, so we wanna make sure that we were gonna have some sort of public hearing at some point.
Let me get Tom caught up, and we'll have it on next week's agenda, so, you know, I mean, just for them to talk about it as a group.
Because we're in all the January 31st, it'll be our, yeah, our-
You know, I don't think it'd be a bad idea to start getting, you know, if you wanna throw some numbers, just so that when we do start discussing it, we have some sort of information. You know, I mean, it wouldn't take him very long to at least say it's gonna cost us much to pave that parking lot. And, and, you know, budget time comes around, you know, it'd be something he'd be asked anyways, I'm sure, by the committees.
No, we have the money already. You're talking about using the portion of the money that was, was already expended in the last budget, right? You're talking about the-
We put-
Yeah, we put, we put a portion away, so I think he's trying to use this year's money.
Well, no, I did think that.
Right? Well, I mean, that would be the wise thing to do, right? The voters have already approved it.
I don't think there's anything saying we have to spend it this year either, so.
I have to look at how the warrant article is written.
So I-
You've approved tearing the building down?
No.
No, approved fixing the parking-
What we did is, we, we got a big clump of money from the school department last year, like almost 500 grand or something like that, I can't remember the exact number. And, so what we did is, we, we put some money aside for the parking lot out here, we increased some other stuff, paid off some stuff, and so we found it was a project that we probably wanted to proceed on, and we had extra money, so we put the money aside for that. But the unfortunate part is, we don't really have a plan yet. So what we're gonna do is, we're gonna speak, you know, hopefully at some point, we'll get it on the agenda, and then at some point, probably have some sort of meeting there with the public, and see what their views on it before we go tearing it down there and get everybody mad at us, so.
Yeah, so the article says, "State of the town will vote to establish pursuant to 30 AM, sorry, 508, section one, capital improvement reserve fund, raise an appropriate 75,000 for the same."
'Cause I believe when we were talking about it, when we put the 70,000 in there, we didn't think the 70,000 was gonna be enough to do a complete rehab, because we were talking about doing some other work down here to get rid of, make the parking area for the library and stuff, so we made it reserved, so we could add to it also.
I see.
Right. I won't forget it, we'll get it on next week's and start talking about it.
Perfect.
Okay, where are we here? Department heads, any more department head, committee chairs? I don't see any. I think we're going down to old business. There is none. Old business, that way we're gonna do the-
Is this, we're gonna make a motion to start filming the warrant and finance committee's meetings again?
Second.
Move to second.
All in favor? Oh, no, let's, we're gonna, why don't we do a discussion on this one first?
Okay.
Okay, we're gonna do, a lot of the times we do the discussion first, we didn't do a discussion, so I think we ought to do discussion groups or the vote, so.
Well, I, I sort of already did that. Now, you want me to repeat that? Is that necessary, or?
Well, you, you-
I don't have anything further to say about it, Dennis.
So, no, okay.
I know. I, I, you know, would hope that, you know, we'll get to business and, you know, things will go smoothly, and I guess that's about it. You know, I notice, you know, I know the policy, what the policy says. Is it something that we need to look at?
Ordinance.
Ordinance, sorry. And think about changing that, where it says that they are supposed to add a warrant in front of it.
Well, I mean, I know that's your, I'm just- So the, have this, I mean, just to make sure that everybody's on the same page. So the way that, when the selectmen originally, I mean, we understand the difference between a warrant and policy and an ordinance. Policies can be adopted by the Board of Selectmen, can be changed by the Board of Selectmen. Ordinances can only be changed by the voters, no ifs, ands, or buts. The selectmen have no authority over it. So the selectmen at the time, when they look at warrant and finance committee duties, what David keeps references are, are the five duties that are listed there. And the first one indicates that they're an advisory, but the next, the next one says shall review all proposed warrant articles. The next one, after due consideration of the warrant articles, shall, they may also provide non-binding recommendations on warrant articles, and then the committee shall make recommendations on the articles. So when you're saying, I mean, if you wanna-
Right, do we wanna put it, that's what I'm saying, does it need to be, do we feel we need to be-
I'm sorry, I'm not gonna-
This is something we can't, okay, David feels that, what this is saying is, is, okay, they're always supposed to meet-
They don't have the authority to meet.
Right, they don't have the authority to meet, but, so what I wanted to say was-
Can you read that back again, the second one, not the first one, where it says what their duties are?
The, so the warrant and finance is an advisory, the committee shall review all proposed warrant articles, except any article which involves the election of municipal officer, and shall obtain factual data to deter the effect on the town.
So the main word is warrant article. If there's no warrant-
There's no duty.
But, but Dennis, I'm, we're discussing this right now. Thank you.
So, so what I was saying was, is I just didn't know, you know, down the road-
So Kim Saunders, maybe we adjust the ordinance, ask the voters if they wanna adjust it, to give it more wiggle room.
You know, honestly, at the end of the day, I, I think, you know, I, I'm willing to consider mine. I think the, the finance committee understands, will understand where we came from, and from here on out, you know, maybe they can be a little bit more, they can adjust the way they do some things too. So, you know, so do I hear a motion?
Make a motion that we approve the filming of the warrant and finance meetings.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. So they will be filmed again. Okay, we have no more old business, we are gonna go down to new business, resignation.
So we received a resignation from Mr. McGurty. So in light of yesterday's election results, I hereby tender my resignation from the warrant and finance committee and capital improvement committee effective immediately. Although it's been a pleasure serving in these capacities, look forward to new endeavors serving the town as a member of the Board of Selectmen. So we need to officially accept that, so that we can work on vacancies.
So I'll make a motion to accept Mr. McGurty's resignation from capital improvement and warrant and finance committees.
I'll second that. All in favor?
So with that said, before you go on to the next one, so we will advertise the warrant and finance position open. I have to, have to look, and I'll work with the chair. Were you a regular member and alternate?
I was a regular.
Okay. He was a regular member. So one of the alternates with the same expiration term will move up to a regular member, and then we'll have an alternate member open. So that, that's based on ordinance. The ordinance talks about how to handle vacancies, that's not us deciding.
How does that get advertised?
So we normally, I mean, we're, there's not a whole lot of places in Acton to advertise it. We don't have a newspaper that goes home anymore. We will, we normally pay to run it once in the newspaper, not a lot more than that. Town's website, APAT will put a cable, put an actual slide on the cable channel, I post it on social media, I'm not sure where else we can, you know, we mention it at my meetings.
We're kinda limiting it on the newspapers now, you know?
Well, the Waterboro reporter does, you know, but people have to pick it up. It's not like the Smart Shopper where you used to get mail to your house.
Yeah.
But it is somewhere, but.
By the way, when I got in my campaigning, I spoke with the reporter from there, and she said she really doesn't hear, she, she covers Acton, would like to cover more in Acton, but I don't, she, she's made the connection with who she should be communicating with, so she can find out what's going on. So I think they're very interested in doing that, is what I got from the reporter.
We can certainly reach out, I mean, we send them at least two ads a week, so they're certainly taking the money.
Okay, alright, so maybe-
They may, they may not be crossing paths.
You're well informed, David, so.
Yeah, maybe it's a different person.
Okay.
Yeah. I know Shapley has a, not, keep going, but Shapley has an actual reporter that, Joanne, that covers Joanne Bargotti, that, Bargoni, that does all the Shapley events. Is that who you talked to?
That's who I talked to.
Yeah, okay, I'll reach out to her, I know her well.
Thank you.
We're all set on the resignations.
Yeah, I was just emailing my quarry.
All set?
Yeah, I'm all set.
Okay, uh, we're gonna be appointment.
We did get some interest in the conservation force committee. Roland Valencourt, who is a year-round resident on Goose Pond Road, is interested in serving. This is the Wesley Ham position. He was elected at town meeting, this is an elected committee. However, after the town election, he decided to decline it, so we've been advertising the opening for several weeks now. The town meeting was in June. He's come forward and is interested in serving on it. So I've created an appointment, if you are so inclined.
Is there any other spots open on that?
That's the only one on that committee.
Okay.
Let me just make a motion.
Yep, you want me doing it?
Doesn't matter.
Oh, you go ahead.
Alright, I'll make a motion to accept the certificate of appointment, title 30 MRS A2253, from the Selectmen's Office, Municipality of Acton, Maine, to Ronald Valencourt. The selectmen of the municipality of Acton do, in accordance with the provisions of the laws of the state of Maine, hereby appoint you as Conservation Force Committee within and for the municipality of Acton until June 30th, 2024, given under our hand this day, 15th of December, 2021.
Do you have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
We just have to sign it.
While you're signing that, how long do you want me to, the warrant and finance seems to be one that, that goes quickly. How long do you want me to advertise the warrant and finance and capital improvement before I bring the names back?
Um, well-
What do you typically do?
Typically, we don't, we don't get a lot of names, because we keep them running. Two weeks is about what we do.
Well, I'm thinking, um-
And they're going into budget season, so it'd kinda be nice to get them someone sooner than later.
Well, I mean, we, next week, and the week after, we got Christmas and all that, first week in January.
Alright, so we'll, I'll advertise it to have names to me by, like, Monday the 3rd, or Tuesday the 4th, and then maybe Wednesday you can review the names.
Yeah, okay.
Oh, you need two? Who was the other one?
Roland?
Roland.
No, Roland.
Oh, yes, I'm sorry. Okay, thank you.
And is that the same thing-
Do we have two alternates that will move up? Do we need to-
I think they've already moved up.
Let me look at the, let me look at the appointments.
Two on capital-
Two on capital improvements, yeah, I knew that. And that, that is, there is an ongoing ad running-
Take a piece of paper, put it up.
For those other committees, but not warrant and finance.
Okay, put the piece of paper, and it's gonna poke through it. Okay, awesome.
Off to you.
Would you like to do a public comment first?
Sure.
We have two executive sessions. Normally when we have an executive session, we'll do the public comment first, in case they go run a long time, so people don't end up leaving and not being able to do so. So we'll open up the public comment.
All right, open. I was wondering about the window replacement. Did these have, the seals broken, having something like that? I was just wondering how, when they were installed, and was there any warranty on these windows from the company that installed them?
Well, we had, the individual that installed them, I think it was our code officer.
It was our code officer.
I don't think he installed windows though, I think he did all the trim and the workaround, didn't he?
I thought he replaced the windows too. He did the windows side and everything.
We certainly have the paperwork, I'm just, we'd have to, have to-
Maybe I'm wrong. But I believe, I'm not sure.
Well, I can probably pull the file when we go in, and I might have something when we come back. It should be well filed.
Okay. And I just wanna thank you very much for passing the filming of the warrant and finance committee. Thank you for that. And the last thing is, I'd like to put my hat in for the warrant and finance.
Okay.
Yeah.
I noted, there you go. I also received another one today, so we're already up to two.
Okay, nice, nice. Anybody else?
I just wanna comment on the, the warrant and finance thing. When the, we had, a couple years ago, we had the question about the, the meeting with the department heads, there was a request for a legal opinion with MMA. And MMA said that the question was written in there, while the, the ordinance says the duties that they're required to do, and the response from MMA was that they're an elected independent body, and they can have a meeting for whatever they want. It doesn't, it doesn't matter. But the duty that is, what you must accomplish, not what you can, you know, we could have, you could have a meeting for a Christmas party.
I don't think we, I mean, we didn't say they couldn't have meetings. That's, I, we didn't say that they couldn't have meetings or anything.
I think we just read the ordinance off, and specifically just said-
You could only have a meeting if you have a warrant in front of it. And that's what the woman from MMA said, that we could have a meeting for anything that we wanted.
Right.
And it was right in the letter, it states, well, the ordinance says this, 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 duties. And she writes back that-
Yeah, I remember.
We're an independent body, and we can do what we-
Right, I'm agreeing with you.
That, that ordinance, but-
Well, we just read the ordinance, what did the ordinance just say?
This is, this is, this is from MMA, he's saying-
MMA, you gotta understand, MMA is an advisory, not an actual legal opinion, okay?
Well, they have lawyers over there.
I know, but they're, they also, they're giving you an opinion.
But duties aren't the requirements, the only thing you have to do. Duties are what you must accomplish.
Do you think with the vote that was just taken, that's resolved this matter?
The vote?
The, the vote that was just taken, where it was agreed that we would continue to-
That's, that's recording the-
This is an entirely different issue. He's, he's-
Entirely different issue.
Oh, I'm sorry.
You're talking about the subject that came up during candidate night the other night, about how the select board won't allow the, the public, the, the finance committee to meet with department heads. Is that what you're talking about?
No.
Okay.
Oh, just saying that we don't have the power to-
The ordinance says these duties, and that's, you must have, it doesn't say that. It doesn't say that.
We just read the ordinance, Arnold.
No, but that's what you must do. They must accomplish those things. They can accomplish other things. It's not, they're not just narrowly focused on, on that, that's all they have to do.
So, so what...
I think the, the spirit of what was intended by what was just voted was sort of acknowledging what you're saying, that it's really up to the Finance Committee to decide when it meets, what it discusses. And the, the selectmen have, have indicated that it should be videotaped. So, I believe the matter's been addressed. That's my take on it.
Well... I mean, you could take whatever way you want to do about it, Arnold, but I guess that depends on, at the end of the day, when you guys start having your meetings again, which you've already scheduled, right?
Monday, yeah, they have a meeting on Monday.
Okay, yeah. Okay, okay, so, say the new committee, when they meet and there's some, some issues, they haven't even really gone over anything other than a few things, I guess. Well, when they start meeting and we'll just see how it goes, but, you know, at this point in time, there really isn't any issues until they have their meetings, right?
No.
We don't want to create any issues before they even happen.
I just wanted to understand that it's not just the duties that's in the ordinance. They can do whatever they want. And that's been ruled by a lawyer from MMA. I have a copy of that. I will email you.
I, I just don't like that when you say ruled by a lawyer from MMA. There's no ruling. A judge makes a ruling. They get, they're given an opinion.
Well, but she wrote it down, please.
Yeah, she wrote it down, but it's an opinion. It's not a ruling.
I understand.
Okay. We're, we're going to, we're going to obviously try to make sure that this is all transparent and we, and the Finance Committee needs anything this year. We'll try to oblige, oblige, but we'll see how it works. If there's an issue, then we'll address it then. But I'm not going to address an issue the way there's not even an issue yet.
All right, any other public comments? Sorry.
Bernard Broder. I'm speaking as an individual, not as, I am a member of the Warrant and Finance Committee, but my comments are my own. First of all, I want to thank the board for revisiting the issue of filming and for the outcomes that happened on that. Unfortunately, because the last meeting was not recorded, you don't really have any way of knowing that there was a discussion during that meeting about what I would characterize as the dynamic between the committee and the board. And that it's not a one-sided thing, in my opinion. So, I think it's important that you know that, that there are people on the committee, some people, who feel that the committee needs to work better with the board and vice versa. And it was my opinion, as I stated during that meeting, that I'm not interested in having discussions during board meeting about personalities or how people may feel about select board members and so forth. I'm there to do the work that I was elected to do. I don't think the general public, when they tune into a recording of a meeting, want to listen to that stuff either. And so, I just, I, I hope that this is a new chapter, that we, I see the vote, that you considered taking a vote and then you took a vote as a good faith effort towards that. And so, what I would say is, you know, I made these comments at the meeting and I will continue to make those comments because I think it is a dynamic and I want any committee I'm on to do their part of moving things forward too. While I'm out here, I also feel that way about our select board meetings in that I've seen things get heated a number of times. Anybody, all of us have days when we don't put our best forward, where we might have said things differently or not said certain things at all. But again, I think it's a dynamic. Some of the people that I see get up to the stand where I am now don't necessarily approach the board in a respectful or polite way. And, you know, sometimes they get a reaction back for that, that ideally, they wouldn't get the reaction, ideally, they wouldn't approach the board the way that they do. You know, I often think, when I watch these meetings, what are we teaching our kids? You know, if, if our kids are watching these meetings, is this the way we want them to see that adults communicate with each other, that adults resolve conflicts and so forth? And so, why I'm saying that is, as much as there have been things that I've seen at a meeting that I found distasteful, that I thought, you know, it's not professional, it's not the way a law should act and so forth, I also recognize and have stated many times to people that it's a dynamic. It's how you approach the board. You know, people are free to say what they want, but what we choose to say, how we choose to say it matters. So, I, again, I acknowledge that it's not one-sided and I hope that everyone will maybe think about that a little bit so that we can work together for the good of our community because that's, that's why we're here, hopefully. And I guess that's all I need to say on that. I don't mean to beat a dead horse, but, you know, hopefully the horse doesn't need to be dead. I think we can keep the horse alive and start moving things forward. So, thank you for your work and thank you especially for the work you did tonight. I think it's important for everybody.
Thank you, Bernie.
Anybody else?
Hello, Margaret Lomond. I know we were talking, or you guys were talking this evening about the parking lot in the building over there. Has there been discussion about what to do with that building since? Back to a gym or something else?
Well, the, the gym thing kind of fell, it's kind of fallen apart due to insurance reasons and all kinds of other reasons. So, that's why we haven't really made a decision yet on what we're going to do to, do with it yet. I, I think, you know, we planned on getting some input from the public before we, you know, do anything, you know, because I mean, we...
I didn't know about the influx of additional residents. It might be something to consider again.
The gym?
Yeah, so we don't have the equipment anymore. So, over the last at least three to five years, May Municipal, our insurance carrier, they come down once a year and they inspect all of our buildings. The biggest concern they had with the gym is that the town isn't in the, the business of being in a finance center. We need, you know, a fitness center. We should have had somebody there, you know, any, all the hours, someone was open, someone trained, someone, you know, spotters. They didn't, it was a huge liability for the, you know, the maintenance of the equipment. The gym, the equipment came from a grant from the fire department. So, essentially, we had them take it all back over. They've got that other building over there and the firefighters use that for training and, and maintenance of, of themselves. The building itself has been written up for a lot of reasons. It's, you know, everything, it's an extremely old building. You'd have to put a lot of money into it. It's certainly one of the conversations the board would have, but it's not, they don't believe it's safe to be in there as far as the air intake and, it's got a lot of, a lot of issues. That's why it was emptied out, combination of the two. But what they're going to do with it now is still up for discussion.
I mean, we, we gave the gym thing, we tried to give it another lifeline and we were hoping that when we did it, there was going to be a bunch of people coming in, like gang buses, like we're going to get this thing going again and it just didn't really pan out. So, it was kind of, you know, well, it's time. It couldn't fund itself. And we, and the town can't, we...
Well, the town didn't approve, one of the last years, and they not, didn't approve money for the gym. But more than anything, it was an insurance issue.
I think it's great to talk more about it. I'm, I'm just curious, structurally, is it sound? Do we know?
I, I mean, I don't believe so. Everything we've heard from our insurance company is that it is not. I mean, that's the old fire station it was built.
It's a brick cinder block. I don't know, you know, maybe the utilities are...
I'm not, I'm not going to say, I mean, the only way that I could, I would not say it was sound unless we had a code officer or a structural engineer going and saying...
Well, but we actually, that happened at one point. I'm trying to think of who was the selectman, but we had Mr. Paul and the insurance company and we've had people inspect that. It was deemed, I mean, that it wasn't.
There was, I know there was a huge list of things that had to be fixed to make it so that it was adequate for people to be in it.
Okay. I mean, and I'll, I'll pull the file and we'll, you know, they had talked about, maybe after the holidays, we can start having some, you know, public hearings, get some input on what...
So, I guess everybody can get their ideas ready for next month and, yeah.
That's right.
Thanks.
Thanks. Robin knows all about the building.
Awards.
What year was that built?
Nothing new about it.
He probably helped build it.
Back in the day. But anyway, I just want to come up and say something about the past and the, and the present. Rogue Commission is taking care of the trees in the town of Acton because that last windstorm, two weeks ago, we had a really bad windstorm. We went out one time. Surrounding towns went out dozens of times. But I just want to say thank you for the tree work that the past and the present Rogue Commission is due to protect the lawyers and stuff of this town.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Don't see anybody. Okay, I guess we're going to go to executive session. Do I hear a motion?
Make a motion that we go into executive session 4056A, Review of Office Assistant Resumes.
Second.
All in favor? Okay. All set? Okay. Do we hear a motion?
I'm going to make a motion that we come out of executive session 4056A, the review of the office assistant resumes.